All right, good evening, everybody. We're going to start the August, October 7th, 2014, twenty word meeting. I'll have myself there. It'll be recorded by Don Mackey for viewers at home and our director, Robin McDonald. Is there anybody else recording? So what affiliation?
Chris Gudrow from Roger.
Okay, thank you for that. We're going to jump right in. We've got a public hearing for Andrew Bordoni for pride towing. I'm assuming we've got some things to read into the record before we start.
The planning board of the town of East Long Meadow would hold a public hearing on October 7th, 2014 at six o'clock in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 60 Center Square, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, on an application for a special permit submitted by Andrew Bordoni, DBA Pride Towing and Off-Road Recovery for a property located at 347 Elm Street to use as a storage lot facility for towed vehicles. Information relating to this application is on file with the planning board and available for review by the public.
All right, Mr. Bordoni, do you want to come up? What we're doing is we're going to have Mr. Bordoni explain what he wants to do, then we're going to talk amongst our, amongst the board members, or we're going to open up the public hearing, give the public a chance to speak, and then we're going to bring it back to the board for further discussion. Okay. How you doing? Good. How are you?
Good.
All right, we've read that at the record. What else do you want to tell us and or show us about what you're proposing?
Here's the...
And your name and address for the record, please.
My home address?
Yes, please.
My name's Andrew Bordoni at 8 Pioneer Circle, East Long Meadow. And basically, it's a special permit to, so I can be allowed to store vehicles at 347 Elm Street. I'd often like to get on the police tow, and in order to do that, I have to get authorization to store vehicles at a, at a...
You guys have also? All right, which faces are you proposing? I see proposed used car spaces. Is that one more?
It's all in the back, yes. Right, right on here. All on there.
Anybody want to start off? Are we open to public? Any comments?
Well, I'd first like to ask, under section 3.5 of the zoning bylaw, or is this, we know that this is a nonconforming pre-existing use-
Correct.
-for, for the body shop.
Correct.
Under 3.5, it can be continued in that use, altered or enlarged in that use, or changed to a use less detrimental. We're not changing the use, we're adding a new use. I don't see how this qualifies for special permit under section 3.5.
Okay.
The property is under special permit.
Yeah, the property.
Yeah.
Right.
But this would require an alteration, and I don't see how with a 3.5 that is allowed.
There's really no alteration. It's basically the same thing that's going on now, it's just allowing myself to store vehicles there.
Well, it's, that's an alteration in use.
It's just an alteration in use. Right now, it's, it's pre-existing nonconforming, as a body shop has, not a body shop, at the whole way it started.
It's also been used in all other towing companies in the past.
What's done in the past illegally?
No, it's been legally. You guys, not me, but in particular, but the planning board has passed it and allowed other towing companies to store vehicles there, and I have proof of that. I can, I can provide that with you guys.
I'd like to say that, too. There's nothing on our record there.
It's in show, I have two of them right here. It's in show's right in the top, it has the name of the towing business and at 347 Elm Street right there.
This is with Commonwealth of Massachusetts, not Tommy's Auto.
Should say the Town of East Long Meadow right on there.
Never came before the planning board.
Before us, though. There's nothing in, I, I looked at the file, there's nothing in our files.
Says right there, Town of East Long Meadow.
But it didn't come before the planning board, just the point.
Then how did that get approved?
This is from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
It came from the state.
All they did was take the information and put it on. This is from the Commonwealth, it's not from the town. The town never issued a permit to see this.
Even though I have the same thing here, and you guys had to approve this?
That's, that's not, those aren't our forms.
This, this right here is one of your forms, and I had to come in front of you guys to get approved by that, from you guys, to even start my business here.
Business certificate. Right. This is a business certificate, while you're towing on industrial, not industrial, or toy box.
It's a business certificate.
That's where you're storing out, that's legitimate use, that's a legitimate business certificate.
Right.
So is that, that's a business certificate.
Agreed. But it's for the state.
But it also says Town of East Long Meadow, the same exact thing that I have there for you guys.
Can I see that? There's no signature on here that, from the Town of East Long Meadow. None whatsoever.
Yeah, what you got before was probably a waiver of sight plan for a business certificate. What you're asking for now is-
I don't know what you mean by a signature. Like, like, like right here, is that what he's talking about?
Yeah, you got a signature, basically, so you can run a, run your business or store your cars at.
Right, but that's right here, this is-
This, this, this is a business certificate. This, this is not even a business certificate. This is your declaration, or Mr. Morel's declaration, that a business under a certain title exists. It's just a declaration. There is nothing here that the state has signed, there, there's no approval by anybody here. There's a notary, and there's the applicant, the, the person who's made the declaration. There's no approval by anybody here. There's no, no signature from anybody at the state level that says that that's approved. That's something that Mr. Morel submitted to the state.
And what about this one? I don't think you see that. Basically the same thing.
This is basically the same thing.
That one was mine.
Right.
I mean, we, we do these things a lot.
The difference with this is it's been authorized by Robin McDonald-
Yeah.
-which, for the planning board, that's through the state. It never came in front of us. Someone basically said, "This is where I'm operating out of," submitted it to the state. The state said, "Okay." But there's no approval through the planning board.
So that's not a business certificate?
It is a business certificate. A business certificate and a planning board pool are two completely different things.
But to have a business certificate-
These are just declarations.
...by the town.
It does. To get a business certificate, you have to do what's called a waiver of sight.
That, that's in her, her capacity as a notary. That there's nothing to do with planning board.
No, it, it does. It says that it's an allowed use at that location. I believe that's to store his, to have the home office and to store his vehicle at the toy box.
When you came before us last time, you asked for what's called a waiver of sight plan to have a home office. And one of the things you were probably told of was that you couldn't keep the vehicle at your house.
Right.
And I think that says you're keeping your vehicle somewhere else.
Right.
So that allowed you to have an office at home, to do work, take phone calls-
And store the, my truck there.
Somewhere else.
Right.
All right. Well, what that also allowed you to do is go to a bank and get a business checking account, get a business certificate. What that doesn't allow you to do is anything else. Store vehicles, have a towing business in a residential property, keep your tow truck at your house. All that business certificate does is let you get, you know, business checking account, and you go through the motions with the state and over the town, but it has nothing to do with a special permit for parking or storing vehicles.
But it allowed me to store my vehicle at that spot, though.
Your truck, your own truck, at a, at a place-
Right.
-where it is only allowed use.
Right.
That's all, that's been approved.
So why can't I do it at 347 Elm Street?
Because it's not an allowed use, it's a residential neighborhood. The only allowed use there is the body shop.
I'm just kind of stuck because it, these right there says that, that address.
It does. That's what the state, they went to the state and said, "This is where I'm storing my vehicles." None of this ever came before the planning board. There's no record, no history whatsoever, and there's no signatures on here from any planning board member.
Or from, or from anybody at the state level. That's simply a declaration that he's filed with the state. That's all that is. If you read it carefully, it says, he's declaring something.
And there's not, there's not one signature, signature from Tommy's Auto.
Or from the state.
And what about when, when it wasn't Tommy's Auto, it was a towing, it was a towing company then, when there was, I want to say-
It was Tommy's Auto.
Tommy's Auto.
That's all we have for historical-
Right.
-information. When Tommy's burned and Tony took it over, nothing, nothing has changed. A grandfather provision that went with it then goes with it now. As long as it's a body shop, it can continue forever, but can only continue in that use. One time, Mr. Bordoni wanted to come for a used car lot, we had to die because it doesn't fit within the use of that property. This is another, you know, this would be a detriment to a residential neighborhood. If you were to do it in a commercial area or an area where it's designated for that, it won't be a detriment because that's zoned for that. Problem is, with the conditions that go with this property, anything other than a body shop simply won't, just won't go.
And I might also add, Mr. Chairman, that if it had been used as a towing place in the past, if it's more than 24 months since that use was discontinued, which it would have been since when Mr. Bordoni took it over, if, if it had been used for that previously, that, that use laps, lapses, so.
So it'd be up to you guys to grant that authority?
No. It's within our bylaws. The vision, it's written in the bylaws, it doesn't even allow us the option to grant that at all. It's written in black and white. You know, those are rules that we have to use to apply to things like this. Now, unfortunately, a lot of people think we make things up, but we don't. Sometimes I wish we could, but unfortunately we can't. You know, it's up to us to interpret the law, the bylaws, the way they're written, and to protect the values of the neighbors as a residential neighborhood. You know, if this was in a commercial or industrial zone, whatever, it's, it'd be a rubber stamp, like just the same way you got a business certificate. But to take a pre-existing nonconforming use, alter or change it, it will be more detrimental to the residential neighborhood that it's in, simply not allowed.
So wouldn't he be able to technically allow, you wouldn't approve me to even park my truck there?
No.
Not even towing, storage?
No. The only one that could park his truck there would be Tony.
And why is that?
Because he owns it, it's his shop.
So what if he wanted to-
He cannot.
-store vehicles there for towing?
He can't.
To tow them for use.
For different uses, we went to where he used car lot, too. You know, we'd install vehicles, we'd do the same thing. Again, just something we couldn't do.
It just doesn't make any sense to me that other towing companies could tow cars in there to get stored.
There's a lot of things that go on illegally-
No, no, I'm just saying-
-that we have no control of.
I'm just saying, if he was to repair something, I'm saying, and towing companies are towing his cars in there and store for the meantime-
If somebody's towing their car for him to work on, that's what we're going to run with his business.
Right. No, I understand that, I'm just saying, it's kind of like the same thing, that's why I don't understand why it's such a big deal.
It may be the same thing, but it's his same thing.
Right.
So now you're bringing your, your entity in there. Your entity and his entity can't exist on the same piece.
But I'm saying, even if he wanted to do it, he couldn't do it.
Correct.
That, that doesn't even make any sense to me.
But that's, that's the way the, the special permit's written, that's the way the pre-existing nonconforming grandfather clause is written. Because it was a body shop, it can always continue as a body shop. Even when Tony sells it, gives it to his children, whatever, it can always stay a body shop. But once that body shop is discontinued for a period of two years, that provision goes away. So if he wanted tomorrow to start a trucking company on there, he could not. Anything other than a body shop cannot go there.
Okay.
All right. So do you want, do you want to withdraw, or do you want me to open up the public hearing?
What is the public hearing going to do?
Invite all the neighbors to speak for, or-
We did, we did. We've already opened the public.
Or, or, the public to speak, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess you can open and speak.
Okay. Does anybody want to add anything before I do open up their public?
The only thing I would add is, when I look at, at a towing company's storage, I see a lot more traffic than I do when people bring a car in to be worked on, and knowing that the towing business for the town involves picking up cars at all hours, day and night. You know, if the police confiscate a car on North Main Street and get it towed, it could be three o'clock in the morning.
But that already, also happens already.
So I, I'm just commenting to the chairman, thank you, that this, I think would be more detrimental personally, but I'd like to hear from the public, though.
All right, we'll go on the board, do you want to add anything?
I don't need to add anything.
All right. All right, this time I'm going to open up the public. Please state your name and address for the record, please direct your comments through the chair. Anybody like to speak? Mr. Bordoni?
I'm the owner, Body Rich Limited. We've been on police tow for over 50 years, just so you guys all know. Tommy's Auto Body was opened up in 1932 and was on police tow for 50 years with storage in my yard, just so you know, and all these neighbors know, too. Fifty years they did towing. Had a fire in '88. I bought in '89, opened up my doors in 1990. CJ came in here in 1991, and I don't know how he did it, asked if he could store his cars here and get on police tow. CJ ran a tow company out of my business, just parking with his own address over there, for eight years, and not one neighbor ever said there was high traffic, high volume, loud noises. I'd never, ever heard any, I've had complaints in the years, never that. Tommy's was the exclusive tow company for the town of East Long Meadow for the police tow from 1932 for 50 years, and did all the exclusive towing and storage in my lot. Okay, so I can't see what the big deal is. He wants to get on police tow for one week a year, the average tow for East Long Meadow Police is two to three cars a week. So if he gets on police tow for one month, one week a month, and tows two to three cars for storage in mine, I do not see any traffic buildup, I don't see any high velocity of customers, I don't see any, any of that laying down on the table. Craig worked out of CJ's, out of our company, had a sign up front, had a sign on the side of my building-
All right, so-
-for eight years.
He started in '98?
He started in 1991. Took out a business permit-
But years later, he was gone.
And he worked for eight years out of my shop-
Okay.
-all right, and then opened up because he got too big, and I said, "It's time for you to move on," and he moved on. He averaged two to three cars a week when he was on police tow. He worked exclusively with the police, so he was there two weeks a month, so he averaged in a month anywhere from four to eight cars. I don't see any traffic overwhelming out of it. I've never had any kind of like oil spills, any of that, or lot is secured, lighted thing. He wants to get on tow, it's not like he's going to run a tow company out of my shop, he has his own office. He just wants to get on East Long Meadow Police tow for one month, for one week a month, which tows in two to three cars that week. I don't see high volume, it was allowed before. I fix cars for a living, when they get towed into my shop, I fix them. He's starting a new business, got out of the Marines, he does towing all over the place, he wants to get on East Long Meadow Police tow and grow his business, and probably do the same as CJ did. Worked for a couple of years, towed his cars, and eventually branched on his own and buy his own lot. So I don't see really high traffic, I don't see volumes of cars, I don't see any deeper mention of any of that. He's not like running a business out of my shop. It was done there before, if he gets it, he gets it, and like I said, I'm here to fix the cars. He, he wanted to open up his own business and do police tow, and Arlyon is the only really, storage facility, really, in East Long Meadow. Custom Auto Body's only got four spots on the side, Macontow's tow's his cars to, to Custom Auto Body and tow's them to Long Meadow. So he's doing that, he got a special permit from Custom Auto Body. I can't see why he's going on one week a year, I can't see why this gentleman can't get a special permit and allow one week a month to tow for the East Long Meadow Police and tow an average of two to three cars a week. Like I said, I'm just here, I owned the place and he offered it to me, and I said, "If you can get on it, you are more than welcome, it's locked, it's gated, you're more than welcome to." If the town approves it, they approve it. Like I said, it was, been an exclusive tow shop here for 50 years. Tommy's Auto Body did all the East Long Meadow towing, all of it. Then in the eighties, Lindell Garage jumped in on the bandwagon, and they split it, and they went one week on, one week off. The neighbors never complained about cars. CJ ran out eight years out of my shop. Not a high volume, it's not like they're going to be towing a million cars, I don't see it expanding into, he's just unit for police tow. When he tows a car, if your car breaks out, it goes to mechanic shop. It doesn't come to ours. If someone gets in an accident and they have it towed to us, it's to fix it. He's trying to do police tow. It's not a high-volume tow. Even the chief said, they towed 197 cars last year. You divide that in 52 weeks a year, you're on one month, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to do this, do arithmetic, so. I mean, I own it, if it gets approved, I have no problem with it. I, I know, we have neighbors, I live right there myself, it's a clean organization, it's not a, it's not a riffraff shop. If he gets on a great, you know, I, I support it, young guy starting his business, I see a lot of guys doing towing in East Long Meadow, he's not trying to do a tow company, I'm thinking, everybody's thinking that he's going to run a tow company out there. He's had his business for years, he doesn't bring his cars to my shop. The only ones that would come to my shop would be the East Long Meadow Police tow's, and that's one month, one week a month, and it's averaged two to three cars a week, so he's not going to run a business out there. So it's not an expansion of a business, it's a special, special permit granted to let him do East Long Meadow Police tow only. That's what he's looking for.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak?
John Nathan, 331 Elm Street. Tony, all due respect, it absolutely is an expansion of the business. It's more cars coming in, and, you know, on one hand, he's starting out a business, I think that's great. But on the other hand, you know, you came right out and said, "He's going to try to grow this business as well."
Yeah, and on his own towing.
And, you know, it's, it's going to grow, it's going to start growing at 347 Elm. What benefit, what benefit does this business offer the neighbors?
What business does it offer the neighbors?
What benefit does it offer any of the neighbors?
It's offering, it's a service for the police department. It's offering if you can act-
But what benefit?
Why, why would it benefit for the neighbors? Why would it benefit?
What benefit? What impact does it have to the neighbors? That's the next question.
He's not, he's towing East Long Meadow Police cars when you get in an accident, just the police. He already ran his, he runs his business for years to come. He, he's been doing it for years. He doesn't tow his cars to my shop. The only cars he wants a permit is for the East Long Meadow Police cars. That's all he's, that's, what does it do for the neighbors? Well, I'm sorry, it doesn't put any loot in your pocket, it sure doesn't make loud noise at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning because we have a gate that automatically goes in, and it goes in and out. You're looking at two to three cars a week, one month, one week a month. So it, it's not like it's a big production. Is his business going to grow? Of course it's going to grow. But all the cars that he tows, they don't go to my shop. He tows them to mechanic shops, to your house, he's only looking for the police tow. That's what he's looking for, and it's two to three cars a week.
All right, sir, is there anything else you want to add?
No, that's it.
All right, is there anybody else? Yes, sir.
Steve Mercier in Concord Drive, I would dispute that it won't add any noise, it absolutely does. A professional firefighter in a community, DMT, I deal with that all day, every day. It requires DOT backup alarms, so to say two or three o'clock in the morning, it won't add to noise, it will. Tony, you know, you're taking trucks, cars and trucks off the tow truck, it adds to noise. What's the provisions for the fluids, for bodily fluids? Again, I work with it all the time. Is it just going to be dumped in the backyard somewhere, or a back lot? When you're towed away, there's fluids again, so to say there's no noise, and my second point is, speaking with the police department, they have no interest at this point in adding a third. They have no interest. As Tony has said, it's one week a year, they're not interested in that because it would open up a can of worms, and then where's a fourth and a fifth and a sixth?
Right, that's not for our, our, our-
But I'm just saying, I've asked, inquired, so that's, right.
You, sir, you had your comments.
Rob Morton, 325 Elm Street. Again, it's clearly a new business, so I don't even know how it can be considered to be added to a business under a special permit. Of course, we're, we're against it, you know? It's only a negative, there's no positive for the residential neighborhood to add additional work at that business.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Dan Hansel, 353 Elm Street. I, I'm not even sure why we're here. I mean, whether it's against all the bylaws, all, all due respect, Tony, you know, the quality of life to, to live next to you is very difficult with a professional Moore across track in the backyard. Not tied to the business, only used on Sundays, not only used on Sundays, used many times in the evening at, at the dinner hour, five, six, seven bikes, not tied to the business, but I'm not sure how it went in next to a wetland. And the, last time I was here, you guys said, "What track?" Just saying.
That's not for us to-
I understand.
I understand, I understand your concerns.
Fair enough.
Okay. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Mr. Gorman?
Quality of life.
Billy Gorman, 243 Allen Street, East Long Meadow. I just want to say, and respect to Tony, when Tommy Marsett owned that business, they towed trucks out. I've been in this down all my life. They did tow cars there, and they towed in there all the time. The neighbors never had complaints then, I don't know what the difference is now, but as far, as far as backup alarms and stuff, all you got to do is hook your key up to a, where you shut the back alarm, like I did on my own truck. So there's no noise at night.
And that's legal, Billy?
But, but, what, excuse me?
Hold on, hold on, let's not-
Excuse me?
Let's, hold on, let's just go through the chair. Billy, please.
And I'm saying this, a young kid that served his country in the Marines, the kid should be given a chance to start a business, just like CJ did. There were no complaints when he ran his trucks out of there, and like Tony says, they had signs on his property and everything. I don't know what the big deal is now. I don't know if it's because Tony owns a business, or what the story is, but he owned a business when CJ parked his vehicles there also, and he towed trucks from Long Meadow into East Long Meadow. And from Springfield into East Long Meadow.
I'm just starting all up here.
No problem. Excuse me, Billy, your address again?
Excuse me?
Your address again, your home address?
Yes, 243 Allen.
Thank you.
That's right. And I just want to say something else.
Thank you.
It's no different than Wilson on Elm Street, running his business out in here.
So you're on Elm Street.
Or Graziano's running their business out here.
If I may.
Thank you.
For the record, let's, for the record, Wilson is another pre-existing nonconforming business. As long as Tom Wilson owns an excavation company out of there, he's entitled to do so forever. All right? So, but if he changes that, he cannot do so. Within our bylaws, if you're pre-existing nonconforming, you're allowed to stay in that that use forever. Once you change that use, then you lose that grandfather provision. If you stop using that use, it goes away after two years. So, correct me if I'm wrong, even if it was done legally, illegally, it hasn't been done for more than 13 years, if what you told me is correct. So, even if it wasn't allowed use, it has long since gone away. In our bylaws, it's not an allowed use. So, if we allowed him to do it at your place, that means we can allow him to do it anywhere else. We can allow everybody else to do it anywhere else. That opens a can of worms that we cannot close. I don't think that's fair to residential neighbors. That being said, I want you guys to have your hands up.
Yes, Mr. Caravella, as you.
Name it.
Stephen Haskins, 330 Elm Street.
Thank you.
I was listening to your comments, and because this is contrary to the bylaws, I'm not sure why we're needing to discuss this because clearly this was not an approved use. But I'll go beyond those comments.
Yeah, he has the right to come before us and ask for it.
Okay. But beyond that, I mean, this is, you know, I respect somebody who's, you know, in the Marines, but this is, the largest investment a person will make is their home.
Correct.
And this is a special interest versus the home values of the people who are directly affected here. And why should we make a, why should we give them special treatment?
Okay. You, sir, you have another?
The question is for the neighbors who are here. Who do we complain to?
I need your name again.
Rob Morton, 325 Elm Street. Who do we complain to when we see something happening, like selling a car?
The zoning enforcement officer.
The who?
The zoning enforcement officer.
And who is that?
Dan Hillier.
Okay. And there's a formal process?
Yes, there is. He's also the building inspector.
All right. So, I guess as neighbors, you're, we have to go through that process?
Right. I think to complain with a special permit, you know, we would get notified only because there's no special permit, but Dan Hillier is the enforcement officer. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? All right, I'm going to bring back the board for more discussion for a closed public hearing.
The only discussion I would add is that the, in the application for the special permit, the use that is added is storing motor vehicles. It does not say anything about whether it's limited to police or other tows. It just says that the use of storing vehicles. So, it's very broadly written, and even if we were to allow it, irrespective of the applicant's intentions at this point, it would, it would be on record as being a broader use than what was explained by Mr. Bordoni Senior. I would also like to add that this is nothing personal against Mr. Bordoni. On my part, I'm proud of him for trying to start a business, but I believe that businesses need to be run in zones that are appropriate for the businesses. And, you know, if that means renting a lot somewhere or renting space at an existing storage facility, you know, that's the way, the way things go. You need to do your business in the proper way in the proper, proper area. And a residential area, to me, is not appropriate for this. That's my own comment.
All right, Rob?
My only comment would be, just looking at Section 3.5, as George pointed out, I don't believe adding a towing business into the body and fender shop would be allowed under our bylaw.
May I just say something?
Yes.
I'd just like to add what he said on trying to go for whether it's already a storage facility. It is technically, I guess, a commercial storage facility already, and, well, it is zoned commercial.
No, it is not. It is zoned residential. It's a pre-existent not conforming business.
But it's grandfathered in.
It's a pre-existent not conforming business in a residential zone. It is zoned residential. Even when that business goes away, it will become a residential neighborhood again.
Well, I guess another thing, I guess what I would add to is that, I'm, the only thing I'm trying to do is store vehicles at a place that's already having vehicles stored there and cars being towed in there. It's not like I'm going to like a regular, like another type of place, like Graziano Gardens and store cars there. It's actually a place that people are already towing cars in there and being stored there, and that's the only reason.
What the vehicles that are being towed and stored are representative of the work that you've been doing.
Right. I know, I understand that. I'm just saying.
So, that, that falls within his realm of doing business with the body shop.
Right, right. No, I understand. I just wanted to make the point that it's not like a Graziano Gardens place. It is already a place that people are storing vehicles there and towing vehicles in already.
Again, for the business.
No, I, yes, I understand that.
All right, you have any comments?
No.
Ty?
Yeah, I agree with the comments the board has made. By the way, I got to be honest with you, I'm really glad that you are, you know, ex-Marine and starting a new business, and I have all the reasons in the world to be positive towards you and what you want to do, but regarding our decision tonight, I can't go forward. I'm sorry.
All right, so we've heard all the facts. Does anybody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, somebody want to make a motion to approve the special permit for private towing at 347 Elm Street? I'm asking any affirmative?
So moved from Ralph, so second.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Force even fails 5-0.
Okay.
All right, sorry.
It is what it is.
It is what it is. All right, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.
These are his. Both of these are his or his? Do you want to add that? Listen, one of his is. I know, yeah. It's a good business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One close.
All right, let's, uh, let's see.
I'm going to have a spot for it.
Let's do, uh, request for waiver of site plan review, NBS Services LLC, 29 Fraser Drive.
Try begin?
Certainly.
Okay, request for waiver of site plan review, Robert V. Adams, Nancy Adams, 29 Fraser Drive. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is NBS Services. Owner of the business is Robert Adams. Same address. Property district is A. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are 8 to 5. Number of employees are one. Date of last parking plan is not applicable. Summary business, business consulting, providing business process, project management, people management services, home office, no signage, no business-specific vehicles, and no customers will be coming to the home office. The application has been signed and dated October 1st, 2014.
So, it's just the home office? Not more? Actually, I know the timeline, they told me all of this, so. Does anybody have any comments?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Just like we always do, approval based on the 20% house coverage and everything.
Vehicles, vehicles.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Motion, second. Any more discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, then we're going to do a request for waiver of site plan review for Innovative Capital Partners, 112 Nottingham Drive.
Property owner is Michael Poggi, 120 Nottingham Drive, East Long Metal. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Innovative Capital Partners. Owner of business is Michael Poggi, 50%. Jamie Erickson, 50%. Their addresses are also listed here. One is 112 Nottingham Drive, the other is 68 Favorite Lane. Property address is 112, I meant 112, not 120. I misspoke. 112 Nottingham Drive, East Long Metal. Property district is A. Allowed use is yes. Hours of operation are 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Number of employees are one. Date of last parking plan is not applicable. This is a home office, no clients or customers. Employees will be coming to the property. We're doing business with licensed patients, which is done by phone, email, fax, and computer. No products, materials will be stored on-site. The application has been signed and dated September 29th, 2014.
That was licensed patents or patients?
Good question.
Patents.
Patents, okay. Thanks, I was thinking.
Well, I'm sorry, when you look at the handwriting here, it looks like patience. I'm not, I don't, I'm not familiar with any people who are doing patents in East Long Metal, but apparently there might be.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was one I knew of.
Sorry about that, everybody.
And the key to this, I think, is that even though there's two people that own the business, there's only one doing, out of that, out of that house.
Again, I'm assuming it's the home office. Any comments?
No. The guys are buying and selling patents, you know, that's, that's very little, takes a computer and a bunch of money.
Ty, you think?
That sounds fine to me.
Ralph, Sandro?
Sounds good, as long as they keep 20%, I don't see no problems.
So moved to approve, subject to the 20% rule.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, update on the building inspector response. I'm assuming you guys for Jay LaFave?
Right. And there was no response, so I prepared another letter to Mr. Hillier.
Okay, well, I spoke with Jay LaFave today. Asked him, in fact, if he wanted to call the building inspector again, see if he wanted to try to push it along. So, I spoke with Jay several times in the last couple of weeks about the issue of the sign. So, I think he's aware of what our position is. You know, I told him what, you know, what paths we could travel down or what ones we could not travel down. I said, so I told him we're waiting for determination from the building inspector. So, he was, you know, I didn't put the ball in his court, in fact, called the building inspector. So, I'm assuming this is just a reiteration of that.
Uh, yes, if you could just read it.
Want me to?
Yes, please.
Uh, this is to the building inspector, time of East Long Metal. Dear Mr. Hillier, September 24th, 2014, the planning board directed our director to send you a letter requesting that you, in your official capacity as building inspector, provide a written opinion to the board regarding whether or not the sign as referenced above meets the size and measuring requirements for the industrial garden district. As of this date, we have not gotten response from you. Please respond as soon as possible. All right, you want me to sign it?
Please, if the board wants to send it.
Yep, that's fine, it's fine.
All right.
Perfect, thank you.
Certainly. And then last, but not least.
No, we have a couple of things.
Full release of Bond for Black Dog Lane, let's get, what's on there?
Not least, not least.
I know, I just, I'm doing what's in front of me first.
Um, yes, I have received notification from Bob Parent, Public Works, that Black Dog Lane has, as you know, they were, the street was taken at last town meeting. There was a crack in the pavement. DPW was going to use some of their extra pavement tar, whatever it is that they have extra from Elm Street. They didn't have anything extra from Elm Street, so Mr. Campbell did it.
Okay.
And it has been inspected, and it's ready to go. The full release is $28,461.16.
DPW is completely satisfied?
Absolutely satisfied.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I need three signatures.
I love how a right-handed guy sounds like the sign's like a lefty. It's awesome, man.
Teacher's nuts.
Absolutely, yeah.
You're supposed to be a lefty, but I will not change.
I was supposed to be one.
That's it, right?
The petitioned articles, the, there's two petitioned articles, one from Wisteria Lane and one for Betterly Lane. They have asked that the board present them at town meeting, if you choose to do so. That's a decision that you can make it right before town meeting. However, the warrant article needs to have a recommendation from the planning board and the DPW. And DPW has given us the go-ahead that these streets are ready to be taken. They're very happy with the petitioned article. The street description is all proper, but I just need a vote from you for whether or not you want to recommend it at town meeting.
Question on Wisteria Lane. Has the berm alarmed?
Yes, yes.
It's all done.
It's done.
Grass is grown.
Yep.
Everything is done.
It's already mowed, in matter of fact.
Okay, good. Just checking, because that was an issue.
Yes.
Neighbor. I actually called and commented to Rob, and they did it.
Yeah, it does look good.
Did a nice job with that. In that case, I'll move to recommend the Betterly Lane taking.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Somebody want to make a motion for Wisteria?
I'll make a motion to accept Wisteria Lane.
No, to recommend it.
Oh, to recommend it.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Because it's a petitioned article, it has to be approved by the town.
No, we've approved it.
No, you've recommended it.
We've recommended it to go in front of a town meeting.
Right.
But they were asking that we actually stand up and present it.
I want to wait till we get to before timings, I think there's going to be more than that for us to represent. We'll just probably ditty that up when we get to.
Michael Smith was concerned because he's the first signatory, and the first one on the petition usually presents it, and he didn't know that.
Yeah, like I say, why don't we get closer to the meeting, because I think there's going to be other things for us?
Sure.
And we'll just, we'll figure it out.
I mean, I'm just curious how streets and all have normally been done, developments and all.
Okay, before the new sheriff in town, the planning board with DPW made the presentation for the warrant articles. They were not petitioned articles. DPW provided the planning board with the street descriptions. When Bob came on board, he chose not to have the DPW responsible for the street descriptions. And he made the decision that it should be a petitioned article since the individual owns the property, so as to make sure that it's done properly, so.
Well, if that's the position, then I think we need to think seriously about whether we want to present something that we have no special expertise in, including the street description and the, the condition of the street. So, I'd just suggest we think carefully about if DPW is reluctant to do it, I don't see where, we're more qualified than that.
No, they're not reluctant to do it. They were reluctant not to have it be a petitioned article.
Okay, well, if they, if DPW would like to present it, that would be appropriate.
I see his point.
I can ask him if that's what you want.
I think, I don't, I mean, I'd like to think about that, to be honest with you.
Yeah, but I mean, if anybody has any questions about the street and its quality, its construction or whatever, we can't answer that.
In all honesty, the last street I presented, I was asked by somebody, and I had.
You had to call in DPW.
I had to ask DPW, so, so your argument has, certainly has merit.
I mean, the chart makes sense.
So, you want me to talk to Bob about making the presentation?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, because I hate to say it, everything, all we do is, we don't do anything without their approval.
No.
And/or their knowledge and/or their, you know, their expertise.
Right, you rely on them.
Correct.
Okay.
Almost entirely.
Typically, a petitioned article is the petitioner that's presenting.
Problem is, Mr. Beretta does not live in town, so he cannot?
He can, with the permission of the moderator.
Let's put it this way, he has no desire to.
Well, he doesn't want to take it.
I mean, they're, you know, people get really nervous and.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, Sandro.
Yeah, I know.
All right, I'll talk to Bob about it.
All right, is there anything else that we want to go over?
Yes, let me see, present the street taking, petitioned articles, you voted on that. Other than the minutes, I think.
Somebody's going to present the sign article to the LCAT?
Oh, thank you.
That was Marilyn.
Mayor Marilyn Richards.
She's going to do that for LCAT? Okay, fine.
Um, one other thing, this needs to be, thank you, it needs to be read into the record. If you remember when you provided Bentley's.
Exactly, to the select board.
Yeah, that's just a copy of it.